Good evening and welcome to the Lompoc City Council Meeting. This is September 1st, 2015. Madam Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Mosby.
Present.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Hohndal.
Here.
Mayor Protem Dirk Starbruck.
Present.
Mayor Bob Lingle.
Here. Please rise and join me, join Pastor, or excuse me, Chap- Chapton Delos in the invocation. I've promoted you.
Pastor Chapton, Minister, just brother and good friend, amen?
Amen.
If you bow your heads, please, and join me. Father, we come before you just thanking you, Lord, we have the chance to be here with people who have sacrificed their life, Lord, and volunteered to do your work in our city, and we thank you for them. Lord, we ask you to bless them with perseverance, with insight, Lord, with discernment, as they go through and conduct the business of our city. Lord, we ask you to bless them with long-term thinking, and that they continue to keep in mind the greater good of our city. Lord, we thank you for them, because it is you who empowers them. And, Lord, now, before we sit down, we just want to know that they would want me to say a special thank you for those who protect our city, those of the police, those of the fire, and those of the first responders, that you will bless them, you will protect them, you'll go before them, and go behind them, and on each side of them, and, Lord, in this special, in this particular time, that you will bless them with safety. We honor you and we praise you, amen?
Amen. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Legions.
Our pledge of legions is to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we've got a couple of presentations tonight. First, I'm going to read a proclamation honoring September being declared Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. This is a proclamation, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection Report, cancer is a leading cause of death among diseases United States children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in more than fifteen thousand of our country's young people each and every year, and whereas, one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children, and teens will suffer from the long-term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. Whereas, founded over twenty years ago by Stephen Firestein, a member of the Philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetic Family, American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc., and Cancer Connection, Inc., are dedicated to helping the children and their families with this fatal disease. Whereas, the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provides a variety of vital patient psychological services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Santa Barbara Cottage Children's Hospital, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life of these children and their families. And whereas, the American Cancer Society Fund for Children and Kids, Cancer Connection, also sponsors courageous kids' recognition award ceremonies, community get well cards, and hospital celebrations in honor of the children's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, I, Bob Lingle, Mayor of the City of Lompoc, do hereby proclaim September 2015 as Children's Cancer Awareness Month, and call upon the citizens, community agencies, religious organizations, medical facilities, and businesses to increase their awareness and participate in the efforts to help fight childhood cancer. Thank you. Okay, and now we're going to have a presentation by Mr. Kennastini from our Chamber of Commerce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, viewers at home. It's been a while since I've been here to see you guys, so I have, not a lot, but some things to go over real quick, so going back a ways. Hopefully, some of you were able to attend, this goes all the way back to June 4th, the HR seminar we had at the Dewey Center on the new sick leave and annual leave policies, went very well, had a huge turnout of folks, we had an attorney out of the Ventura area come up and conduct that to help folks understand the importance of the new law that actually took effect in July, so that was a good one. That same day, had Economic Development Committee meeting that evening, the 12th of June, I attended the Federal Correctional Complex, there are DAT programs, the Drug and Alcohol Program, the inmates go through, and if they complete the nine-month-long program, then they get time reduced from their sentence, and there was like twenty-three graduates, it just really was an outstanding program. Glad to attend that. On the 15th, attended the Criterion Bike Meeting, as we were planning for that event. On the 17th of June, went to the Economic Vitality Team Meeting in Santa Barbara, that's moving along. On the 18th, we had a mixer at Rabobank, hopefully some of you made that, I know I see a lot of you, some of these different things, don't ask me to remember, because I won't, won't be able to do that. The 23rd, attended the Vandenberg Air Force Base Newcomers Briefing, again, attend those twice a month, to make sure folks know what's going on around our community. That same evening, Community Bank of Lompoc held a mixer, and then that evening afterwards at the Parish Hall, we had our Window Award Contest, along with the Beautification Commission and their yard decorating contest that we do every year right before Flower Festival, and that went real well, and appreciate the support of the, of COTI and the Beautification Commission in making all this happen together, so. On the 25th of June, attended the graduation of Coast Valley Subs Abuse, their graduation, again, another good program in our community to help people struggling with drug and alcohol problems, they probably had, oh gosh, I bet at least fifty people at that ceremony, and again, they have to complete a program before they can graduate, so that was a good program. On the 30th of June, we presented the newly-formed Lompoc Wine Alliance with a check for eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars from the Chamber, money we've raised over the years with our wine events at Old Town Market, so kind of got them rolling, and I'll talk a little bit more about some more money they've been able to receive, but that's kind of a start to get them moving. That evening, had a ribbon cutting for the new expansion at Pizza Garden, hopefully many of you have seen that. On the 4th of July, we held our Annual Military Affairs Concert in the Park, at Centennial Park, and our kids' bike parade, and this year the bike parade was just packed, it was loaded, it was too big to get one loop around the park without overlapping the next part of it, so that went real well, so again, good kickoff for the day on the 4th of July. On the 7th of July, Victor will remember this, I think, hopefully remember, I went and spoke to the MOS Group, the Multiple Listing Service, is that the acronym, Victor? Are you sure? Okay, I spoke to the Realtors about things going on in Lompoc, and always interesting to speak to the Realtors and hear what they have to say, and share with them what I know is going on in the community. That same day, Explore Lompoc had their regular monthly meeting, that evening I attended the going away for the wing commander, Colonel Balt, and his wife at Vandenberg. On the 9th, they had the change of command for him, and welcomed the new commander, Colonel Moss, to Vandenberg. On the 10th of July, of course, Old Town Market started, same weekend, Piper Cup Fly-In, which was another huge success, I think. On the 14th of July, also attended another Vandenberg Air Force Base Newcomers Briefing, maybe I'll lump those all together next time. And again, every week through the end of August, we had our Old Town Markets, which just want to say, those things went extremely well, I think, this year, and I know I saw many of you out there, and want to thank the city for the help with that event, because without the city's support, it would be difficult for me and my other two staff members to pull that off, so the city's support is tremendous for that. On the 22nd of July, we had our Annual Award Dinner for the Chamber, recognition of Man and Woman of the Year, and I'm sure all of you know who that was, Dave Baker and his wife, Dr. Teresa Martinez Baker, Man and Woman of the Year. On the 23rd of August, attended the Police Department Business Leaders Meeting at the Four Square Church to talk about the walkarounds that Chief Walsh has started, I've not been able to attend one of them yet, because he usually had them on Friday nights, which is when we had Old Town Market, and by the time it got eight o'clock, I was done for the night, so, but I hear those are going fairly well. On the 27th of July, the Explore Lompoc Group gave money to the Wine Alliance to help them, again, get started, they plan on doing a Harvest in the Ghetto event sometime in early November, so I'm not sure where they're at, what they're planning to do that, but Explore Lompoc helped them with some money to attract people here. On the 13th of August, I attended another event at Vandenberg with the, for Brigadier General Garland, held a reception for outgoing Lieutenant General Raymond and incoming Major General Buck. That next day, they had the promotion for General Buck to Lieutenant General, and the change of command of General Raymond and General Buck. 17th, attended the last, 17th of August, attended the last meeting for the Creative Crosswalks Project, which, of course, we all know is now in place, I saw somebody actually out there painting on it today, I'm not sure why, but somebody was painting a piece of it again today, so, but it's held up pretty well, I think. On the 20th of August, we had our orientation night for parents and kids for our next class of Youth Leadership Lompoc Valley, that will be kicking off with their retreat in September 12th and 13th, Bob knows all about that, he'll be right there with them. So that's going to go well, I think, this year, again, we have twenty kids and two liaisons. On the 25th of August, attended an MC, an event for Congresswoman Lois Capps, that she holds every year for veterans at the Vets Hall, had about probably close to a hundred people maybe attend that, and she takes time just to really talk to them and see what their concerns are and our issues, she kind of refers them to one of her staff, and says, okay, get some notes here, and let's go back and work on these things, so I think that's a good thing. 27th of August, we had our Old Town Market After Action Meeting to talk about next year, and about things that maybe need to change or work on, again, overall, pretty good feedback, I think it went real well this year. Last Friday, the 28th, we had our Annual Military Affairs Barbecue at Vandenberg, we barbecued for probably over a thousand military people, provided them with chicken, tri-tips, beans, the whole nine works, went extremely well. Tough day, though, it was hot, it was really hot, so the water really went well, fortunately we, we had thirty-six cases of water to go through, and a variety of sodas. That same evening, we had a ribbon cutting for a new business here, again, I know some of you were there, Island Mixes, new restaurant down on V Street, hopefully, wish them a lot of success. And then this morning, we had our monthly, again, monthly Explore Lompoc Meeting, so with that said, if there are any questions, just by the way, the report we do semi-annual will be emailed to Teresa tomorrow morning, so it's done, so, yes, sir?
Councilmember Starbruck.
Yeah, out on base in the retail facilities, there's a bus tour of Lompoc, do you know anything about that?
A bus tour of Lompoc?
Yeah, it's in the commissary, the exchanges, and it's, it's a very big poster that says, you know, for newcomers, a tour of the Lompoc Valley.
Hmm, I don't know, but I'll find out. I'm wondering if that's something that's done through their normal newcomers orientation they do, but they do, they're doing different stuff all the time, but no, I'll definitely find out and see what that is.
Anyone else? Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see, this is City Administrator's Report.
I voted instead of turning on my mic, it's a tough technological challenge up here. Thank you, Mayor. Three quick things, first of all, just to follow up with you from when we last met and the, you had voted on the revenue share agreement on the Summit View Annexation, just wanted to report that the following Tuesday, the Board of Supervisors approved the same revenue share agreement, so at this point, I've handed the package back off to the planning staff who is wrapping up things for Lafco, Lafco was only waiting for those revenue share agreements to be able to conclude the annexation process for the Summit View Annexation, so we're expecting that to be concluded here in fairly short order, but just wanted to report the outcome of that and what's underway. Also, that I had attended a Community Relations Board Meeting at the prison, and just to let you know, we keep in close contact with both the Air Force Base and the prison, they're important community partners to us, and so we participate in what's going on there. I was at the, you know, it was great to see the Creative Crosswalks dedication get done, I'm really looking forward to doing more of that, appreciate your support to this point, and if we have resources that become available through, this last one was done through a grant, if we have more that become available, we'll look forward to expanding that program. I think it's just a great opportunity, not only does it give us something that's, you know, a little unique, but also just a chance to promote pedestrian activity, and then when we do that around storefronts, that helps with economic development as well. And finally, that same night, I was happy to celebrate 39th anniversary with my wife, and so we're doing great, thanks.
Congratulations. Okay, we're going to go into public comment on the consent calendar, this is your opportunity to speak to us for up to three minutes on anything on the consent calendar.
Pam Wall, resident, I have a couple of things on the consent calendar, first of all is the minutes, they don't get posted online, yet they're approved at every council meeting, with the exception of one, when the date of approval wasn't on there, I'm just wondering if this could be routine, to post them after the council meeting, once you approve them, they should be posted online. The second thing is, I would like to suggest that perhaps a council member or the mayor could request polling item number five off of the agenda, which has to do with the settlement with the county of Santa Barbara for the utility over and under charges, just for clarification on what was written in the staff report. For example, the city was first formally notified of a possible overcharge, but it doesn't say by who, did the county notify the city, did an employee, did a resident, did the consultant that we have, who notified the city of the overcharge, or the undercharge? Overcharge, in that case, and that was going on, the electric on our street was since 2009, but the wastewater charge is under it, is through 9914, but when did that start? The electric charge has to do with metering, but the wastewater would not be included in that, and the amount from the electric department is considerable, the net effect here after the undercharges are removed is 234, 855, but the electric department is over a quarter of a million dollars, and that is significant, 251, 363, 38. Now, the other accounts have to be reconciled, and how is that done? Does that come out of electric? Where does that come from? It doesn't come out of the general fund, as this states, so how do we reconcile, it's primarily the wastewater account, I don't know. And the other thing that I have a question on is that it states the statute of limitations currently, one year doesn't apply in this case, because the county's a political subdivision of the state of California, so my question, I guess, would be, does this 1% statute apply to the city when an undercharge error is discovered on a business or a residence account? And, or if a customer claims an error on their billing, and it's discovered, it goes back more than a year, or they only allowed one year? And if that's the case, I think that should be stated on the bill. And I'm wondering how many more accounts, as we go through this audit, are going to be impacted, I don't know, meter changes or whatever, there's a lot of, there's a lot of unhappiness in the community over their billings and not understanding how their wastewater bills are charged, now, Facebook is not a place to get facts, and so I'm not giving this to you for the facts, but so much for the misunderstanding in the community, and why they feel like they've been charged incorrectly, and some of them explain it here in pretty good detail, so for your information, it's just for your information.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Consent calendar. Okay, seeing no one rise, going to bring back to council, seeing from the council wish to pull anything from the consent calendar. Okay, can I have a motion?
I'll move the consent calendar.
And we have a second.
I'll go ahead and second it, I just wanted to make comment here also, there's other issues, Ms. Wall, on the utility, that later on, when I have enough information together, I'm going to do a council request concerning this, there's several other tentacles than just this one, so be assured it's being looked at.
Okay, we have a motion and second, any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0, thank you. Okay, staff presentations, we don't have any staff presentations, so we'll move on to oral communication, this is your opportunity to speak to the council on any item for up to three minutes, if you have, come forward.
Hello, my name is Jerry Blake, thank you for seeing me, I'm here over your dog ordinance to spade and neuter. I got a dog, and I got him for protection, he's a German Shepherd, I did not know about this ordinance, because it didn't apply to my previous dog, he was altered. I got him, and I was able to easily make him my emotional support dog, because it was a required situation by the city of Lompoc. I paid the fees, and he was licensed, and he's been licensed for eleven months. At eight months, I got a notice on my door, or my gate, saying that they had no dog licensed at that address. I called them up and provided them, gave information, took all his papers down to them, and they said, handed me the same form that I had filled out the previous year for the city, only this time it had an exclusion on the bottom that said, "Emotional support dogs do not apply." I live in an alley house, where my entrance is the alley, I've been robbed several times, I've been mugged getting into my home by kids, six kids, between the ages of eleven and fifteen, I suppose. This dog protects me, he keeps me safe, I have a deadbolt on my gate, he's not loose running around, if he does get loose, today I had somebody jump my fence, open up the deadbolt while I was in the shower, and he let the dog out, basically. When I opened up my front door, of course, he went outside the gate, and he was in the alley, but he stays right by the gate, because he doesn't go anywhere without me, because he's a mommy's boy, you know, I am not planning to breed him. I have been disabled for several years, I could easily probably go get him licensed as my disability dog, however, the county, city animal control is requiring that I pay to have a certified dog trainer train him, which will cost me way too much money, I cannot afford such a thing. I've had several shepherds in the past, and each one has become complacent once they're fixed, and lazy. I don't want to fix him for any reason to breed him at all, I want to fix, don't want to fix him, I want to keep him, because he takes care of me, we walk twice a night during the day, and he, he's turned into such a great dog, I can drop the leash, and he runs right back to me and hands me his leash. Thank you for seeing me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one rise, sir, did you have something?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sterling Ram, a member of the city, how you guys all doing today? Just wanted to drop off one of these E.T.F. Hopefully, we don't have to keep this sort of, kind of thing going on here, it's a little bit ridiculous, you know, it's very big words, and like, a lot of things like that, but it arrives.
It's a good picture, though.
Thank you.
Okay, get in front of the microphone.
As far as a whole, I think we could operate a little bit better as a community, and, you know, not so much as a city versus people, or vice versa, and I hope you guys will have a great night, and read the article, it's really good.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing no one rise, we're going to close oral communication and bring it to staff requests. This is City Manager Patrick Guimilla is going to present a review of water utility rate charges and easements for the property located at 500 West Willow Avenue here in Lompoc.
Thank you, Mayor. Side was being brought forward from a discussion we had a couple of meetings ago, Mr. Leslie has been appearing here over several meetings time, stating his case concerning his property and his billing on water and wastewater charges, and so we decided a couple of meetings ago that this would be the meeting where we'd go through and address that, and air out the issues as we understand them. At the conclusion of my remarks, I hope you'll provide, Mr. Leslie is here, I'd hope you provide him adequate time to respond and present his side as well, I'm presenting from the city's perspective on the issue. So as you can see, we have basically two, two issues at hand, one is whether or not the property should be paying the regular city rate, or one and a half times the water and wastewater rates, according to the city ordinance, and then the second issue is, does the city have appropriate easements for reservoir drain line and water lines that are across and/or adjacent to his property? So let me start here with the water rates, and not to get into great detail about the resolutions on the left, but to sort of capsulate what's in there and what's appropriate, is if we are focusing on 6A there, which calls out, as you can see on the right, that for water rates, rates of 1.5 times the minimum rates for customers outside of city limits have existed in the fee resolutions since at least 1975. Secondly, with wastewater rates, same thing, you can see from a resolution on the left, but particularly as we point to summary that's on the right side here, that the rates of 1.5 times the minimum rates for customers outside the city limits have existed in fee resolution or ordinances since at least 1989. I point out those two things, the wastewater in 1989, water rates going back to at least 1975, because it's pertinent to the timeframe in which the Leesleys have owned this property, which dates back about thirteen, fourteen years, so those have both been, since, that has been since the time that we've adopted a 1.5 times multiplier for rates outside of the city limits for both water and wastewater, and their property does sit just outside of the city limits. Here's a quick screen capture showing an aerial view of the property in question, a couple of things to point out here, first of all, this is the Leslie's home, right here, here's our water tank, and you can see what's plotted along here in this yellow line, is the line that comes down here, and right here at the corner of the property is where an easement exists, and that's where this line then traverses to head into a basin that we have. This portion of the property along here is a This portion of the property along here is a portion the city has that's about a 20-foot wide strip, and the city owns that in fee title. So the issue we have about the, where, where the placement of the line is has to do with a section that's just right here on the corner. So first of all, to talk about that placement, the, the easement is established through this grant deed that was, that, that dates back to the year 2000, so that would have been a couple of years before the Lesleys owned it with the prior owners, the Campbells. So I just point out, you know, you can see the dates here. This has been notarized, and the grant deed is, this is a document that entails five pages altogether. There apparently has been some confusion at times because three of the pages that we're about to look at constitute a single exhibit, and they are listed as one of three, two of three, and three of three. They sit on pages two, three, and four of this five-page easement deed. So here's the cover page of that deed. We'll also, I wanted to point out one more thing. The words here, "For valuable consideration," that's standard language because to have a valid contract within the state of California, you have to have consideration on both sides. And so this merely points out that there was consideration given. It doesn't tell us what that consideration was, merely that consideration's given. So the second page of this five-page document is the first page of the three-page exhibit. This is what actually describes, gives a detail of where the, this language just describes where this line is running. This page then shows their property, and as I pointed out before on that GIS picture capture, that corner that we're cutting across, so tanks up here, lines running down here, and it cuts across right here. This is what's being shown from this document back in 2000 of where it occurs. So this is at a, you know, at a, at a larger view. Now we're going to zoom in sort of in the next final pages of the exhibit portion of the document. Page four shows a little more close-up detail of how the line runs. And then finally, this is showing it's been notarized. This was the, the recording of the document. So that's the five pages that we have that, that are our demonstration of legal entitlement to be able to have this easement and have the water line that runs across that corner of their property. Sometime later, this is something we've discovered a little more recently, sometime later, in this case in 2010, is a public utility easement deed that was also involving that same corner of the property. In this case, it had to do, I believe, with our fiber optic line. Is that correct? Yes. With the fiber optic line. So this is a six-page document deed that discusses that. Here's notarization that you can see going with, with this. Here's the description again, similar description of the property involved, drawing again, showing that corner of the property, and, you know, the final certificate of acceptance. So then, there's also just one more document here to share. This is an older document, dates back to 1961, I believe that date is. It's back quite a bit. Fee title for the Oak Street Reservoir Pipeline. So this is the fee title, that 20-foot wide strip that I was just showing you shows, and it's hard to see on this picture, but again, if we go back to the screen capture here, that's what's talking about, this parcel that runs right along here. So now we get into some correspondence that's gone on at the time that there had been a, as I understand, a letter from Mr. Leslie to the city wanting to understand exactly what the charges would be. This is his letter to the attention of Gary Keefe, who was the city administrator at the time in 2003. He's asking the city of Lompoc to install a water meter and electric service in the alley between L and M. And the implication, I, reading the last line here, is how much will it cost, taking this into consideration? We are buying water and electricity from you. Be nice. So it indicates his understanding there would be, there's going to be pricing involved. He's hoping that it's reasonable price. There, so there's a few days, that was on, that's a letter dated June 29th. A couple of weeks later, on July 11th, Susan Segovia is, who's one of our staff members, receives a letter from Gary Keefe. Gary Keefe had been the, prior to being city administrator, had been the utilities director and was sharing his recollection, his understanding and his best recollection at the time at least of what, what is involved, what the charges should be. And part of, trying to read through. So it's talking about, it's my understanding at the time, the city of Lompoc would waive AB 1600 impact fees and the like. So he's talking about some waiver of fees, but that the work had been completed, meter installed, hydrant is installed, drain was installed. So the bottom line is, please assess no AB 1600 impact fees for that installation and that the other fees are, is applicable. So from there, on that same date, then Susan Segovia takes that information, sends a reply to Ray Leslie based upon the information that we've gotten, and she says, "That address, your address is located in Santa Barbara County, therefore," in other words, not in the city of Lompoc, "the 1.5 multiplier applies for fees. Following fees apply to the single-family home located at 500 Willow Avenue," and it lays that out. And furthermore, later in that month, on July 29th of 2003, more detailed letter laying out all the appropriate charges, including, "The cost of water will include a 1.5 multiplier above the rate because your property is located in the county." And this is just page two of that document, wrapping up a list of the fees. Finally, just this final takeaway, we've got that, explaining here on the right that, this is written by our finance director, "As part of the comprehensive review of utility charges initiated with the arrival of, when I, when I got here, it was determined that the wastewater charges had not been assessed at all against Mr. Leslie's property at the time it was connected to the system up until 2014, and that the water charges had only been assessed at the regular rate, not at the 1.5 rate." His calculations, cumulative calculations for the wastewater charges that went unbilled that should have been billed, $6,983, and for water service charges that were billed only at straight time rather than time and a half, that the value of those underbillings is about $5,406. So altogether, there was some $12,300 and change of underbillings that occurred between water and wastewater over the period of time from when the Lesleys commenced their account up until the time that we discovered the error in billing. And here's a note, I guess dated from May, that Mr. Leslie provided to us, signed by the Campbells, that their recollection was that the agreement between the city of Lompoc, related to that grant deed that we were first showing back in 2000, that that valuable consideration was indeed that the rates were going to be at the standard city rate of, at straight time rather than at 1.5. This is the only document we've, are aware of that has that. We haven't been able to find that in our archives. We haven't been able to find it in any recorded document. What we have is this letter that was signed by the Campbells making that statement and that they apparently wrote to Ray Leslie, and he in turn shared that with us earlier this year. So the summation is, based upon the preponderance of the evidence, if you will, of what we have, we've felt that the appropriate charges were for the water and the sewer rates to be at 1.5 times consistent with the code, and all of our recorded documents and communications seem to have indicated that, that the underbillings that occurred, the nonbilling of sewer, obviously, was an error, because this doesn't mention that that should, should have been waived, and we couldn't waive it. And furthermore, that the water should have been at 1.5, but it was only at straight time. So that really are, my, my point was to make to the
Councilor Starbuck.
Presentation of facts to you there.
Thank you.
There was just three questions that I'm going to bring up. I don't expect you to have the answers right now, but I think that maybe next meeting. First off, a calamity of errors on the city's part here, zero billing on the sewer and one multiplier billing for 11 years. It's a long time, and we're having this in other areas of the city currently. The other thing, could we go to the GIS overview, please? The property that's immediately to the west there, they're not in the city. What are their billing? What is their situation and status?
1.5.
They are paying, we've gone in and actually looked at this, this property?
That was my understanding, yes, that in the, we were, we were asked about that. Mr. Leslie first asked me, and then we went and checked all, all those county properties being served, and yes, it's at 1.5.
Now, the other thing that, surely the Lesleys are not the only ones that are affected with this. What, say that they decided that they wanted to go ahead and annex into the city so that they could have utilities at the standard rate? If we could maybe outline a process, because I think there's other people that eventually may want to consider this.
Yeah, if I could speak to both the other two points there. First of all, on the billing issue, we recognize we've got a, we've had a flawed system in our billing, and this isn't to make any excuses, and, you know, I, I take full responsibility for, for this and getting it corrected. But, so, not an excuse, but an explanation. As we've discussed several times, we have an antiquated financial, automated financial system. Automated is a term I use loosely in this regard because in a true automated financial system, we would be able to commence a, a service from, from one action, one location, be able to rectify that between the physical service going out in the field, the service being billed, and ensuring that the, the rate variables are accurate, and we'd have, we just have a better process, better tools to be able to do that, in addition to having a process where we have to go in and, and, and verify that the information is correct. As I explained before, our solid waste, to start solid waste service, actually involves us putting pieces of information in four different places. And so obviously, it can get prone to error between what you think you have in place in terms of your assets, like bins and things like that, how it's showing up on a route sheet, how it's being billed, and what's really being collected can all have, have the potential of, of having a different profile to it. We need to fix that. We don't have any excuse for why we wouldn't be, have billed his sewer, for instance, other than when we commenced and we were keying in back when, the original information into the account, somehow that line item got fixed, probably a, a data entry error. And we were missing the components that would have said, for instance, in a modern electronic system, that would have said, "Hey, you've got an outlier here. You've got something that doesn't look right to the system. Can you recheck that?" And would, would cause an exception report to happen. So not only would the person look again and make sure it's right, but then you'd have something going to the supervisor to follow up and, and ask, "What happened here, and how's it been resolved? Can we look at the account?" So we have a path toward getting fixes. It's, and we're underway with that, but it's, one of those things, it's like turning a very big ship. It takes miles to turn it because the last thing we want to do is rush out, get a system that isn't properly adapted to our needs, and end up in the same boat with a different set of problems. But we are, it is a priority for us, and you've been good enough to help commit the resources in that direction. Ms. Wall asked the question earlier about, well, how many more, you know, accounts might be affected by this? If I, it's, it's a great question. If I knew the answer to that, we wouldn't be having these issues. It is the unknown that is our, that is our challenge. But we're working for that. We've obviously had, we've made discoveries of both underbillings and overbillings as we've been working our way through our utility system, and we're seeking to reconcile those, and we'll continue to reconcile those. We're not waiting for the automated system to get in place to do the homework that we need to do. We're working our way through all the customer accounts. We have thousands of customer accounts yet to work through. On the issue of annexation, I'd have to say it depends, and you're right. I'm not going to have that answer for you tonight, but I'd be happy to come back with what we understand on that as a possibility. If we have land that's already been identified in a sphere of influence, you know, urban growth area and the like, it's a lot easier to proceed if there's this desire to do an annexation. It's a lot easier to proceed through the process with that than if it's in our general plan, we haven't identified it that way, we haven't identified this land for future annexation. Then we'd be starting a whole new process that includes environmental considerations and the like. So that's a, becomes a much longer process. So rather than speculate, I'll do the homework and report back to you.
Councilmember Humdol.
Yeah, a couple of things. One is that I thought we already discussed at one time, the sphere of influence of the Lower End of Magalita Canyon. We had it before this council at one time, and I thought we passed on it to go ahead and have it in the general plan.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to verify
I do.
That information, have, have a response for you on that in two weeks.
Because that, we give them a chance to come in. The biggest concern a lot of them have is the pipeline to get to the sewer line where it's going to go, but there's also some of the homes up there awfully close to the China Creek up in there, which is going to, going to cause them some problem not be able to drill again because it's going to be penalizing the sewer, the water system. So that, they're going to have to find a way, and we're going to have to work with them in that, but that's one way we can have is if you want to not pay one and a half percent, 1.5, then you come to the city. The other thing I had a concern on, some of the documentation you were showing me with the notary.
Yeah.
As a notary, a lot of them look illegal.
Really?
There's some are not filled out right at all.
Well, you know, some of those were from quite some time ago, too.
I know, but anyway, they were certified, notaried people, and the document they had is some of the same stuff we look at now, and some of it doesn't look good. And as a notary, if I sent anything like that in... And as a notary, if I sent anything like that in, I'd be out of business right now. So I think you may want to double check those, have somebody come and take a look at them, because there's some not filled out all the way. I don't care what year, go back to, I've been doing it since 93, so it isn't something like that. But anyway, the idea of annexation up there and the sewer, and how we can go ahead and get people in, because I've got a real concern that, because they are starting to redo some sewer systems up there, and they're going to have to basically plug into the city.
Councilmember Mosby.
If you could go to the third to the last page, the document dated July 29, 2003. In, on the bottom there, you have 1.5 multiplier, but I believe that was for construction water, right? When you read down in there, the last paragraph?
During construction, you can use hydrant water, and your construction water tools will cost 700 plus the cost to be used. The cost of water will include a 1.5 multiplier.
And I think that's identifying the construction water.
Okay.
But I've gone through here, and I haven't really seen where we told him, and I'm not saying this is an excuse for not charging 1.5 times rate, but we have things in the fees are going to be 1.5 times rate, the construction water will be 1.5 times rate, but do we have something? I don't think he was identified in here that his water or sewer would be 1.5 times rate.
On this document from July 11, 2003, 500 Willow is located in Santa Barbara County, therefore, the 1.5 multiplier applies for the fees. The following fees apply to single-family homes at 500 Willow.
Right, so we've got fees and construction water, and I, you know, I just was pointing that out because it was kind of glossed over and made it look like we identified, but I don't think there's anything in here. Did you see anything that identified?
I wasn't meaning to gloss anything.
No, no, I know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, but, I mean, because I think solid waste is also 2 times rate in the resolution, if I remember right, it was reasoning, which is something new. I didn't even know myself that actually outside city limits in the county, if solid waste pickup is 2 times rate. So there are, I mean, it was new to me, and I'd been around a little bit, so there are some of these, and I guess we went a number of years all the way up Megalito Canyon in doing that. I mean, kudos to you to finding that and cleaning, cleaning up a lot of that. I know it's, it's, people are pointing fingers, asking why, why? Well, I'm glad at least we're getting to it and are cleaning up a lot of that. I know there was like 51 accounts in Megalito approximately, that were also being mischarged, weren't being charged the 1.5 times rate. And now that you, I believe that's what it came out, it was about 51 accounts.
Brad, are you aware?
I'm not aware, I don't know the number of accounts that the utilities have been working with up there, but there are quite a, quite a number.
Yeah, it came out, I think, that number at Utility Commission meeting, so just also to point out that it's not just like somebody was singling out one person. There's a long, I think the letter went out last summer.
Again, the, when I started working here, my commitment to you was that we were going to, before we started talking about new or increased taxes, we were going to go after the revenues we were entitled for, those things where we were earning revenues but not collecting them, and we were going to, we were going to collect them. And so part and parcel of that was examining utility rates. It's not limited to utilities, what we've been doing. We've done it with our TOT transient occupancy tax, and with property tax, with sales tax, with business tax. We're hitting every line item. So you're right, it's not, it's not focused at any one account, not at the Lesleys. We are auditing our system.
I was pointing that out as well, that there were, I believe the letter went out last summer to a lot of the people at Megalito Canyon and other areas, reminding them that they're 1.5 times rate. So, I mean, I know it doesn't seem right, but it is right, so I appreciate you guys cleaning that one up.
Mr. Wyndham, just one comment. I believe I'm correct, you can just verify it. So early this evening, we discussed an item where we had overcharged a client, and we've discovered that, or it's been discovered, and we are now paying back that amount of money in full.
Correct.
What we're discussing this evening is, we are not that $12,000, we're not asking the resident to pay for our mistake of back, or not collecting, we're just saying from this day forward, that's what the fees are going to be. Is that correct?
We haven't asked him yet, anyway.
Okay. So we are, at this point, we, you know, we have not asked for it.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Wyndham? Mr. Leslie, would you like to come forward?
That's just the first page, advance forward with this one.
Just forward there?
Forward and back.
Okay.
And then the red one's the pointer, if you want.
Thank you. Well, number one is, hi, I'm Ray Leslie. This letter that we've got from the Campbells, they're a very prominent family in this town, they have been forever. They're not going to write something and put it down to where they can get themselves in trouble to help me out of something. This was all done when I bought the property. And while we were doing the property, there was quite a few city workers up there, because we were installing electricity, the sewer, I done myself, that runs actually five blocks the opposite direction. We crossed the channel with steel piping. It was quite a challenge, but we did it. And I didn't know we weren't paying any money on the sewer, but that's, this water thing is just kind of out of, out of control. It's all the stuff that I've brought to you guys to show you what we've done. And when I come in and talk to Larry Bean, I showed him some information where the guys that were on site, and I had their business cards, and I kept a whole book on building the house. Everybody, every name, whether they were with the city, the county, it had their business card, a little notes in there, and I still have all of that. And I showed it to him, and there was a guy in there that was with the water department, and he was up there working on the project with Raul Gonzalez and these guys doing electrical, and he put a statement right in my book that the water would be at city rates. When I showed that to Larry Bean, he took it over to the gentleman, I guess he still works here, I wasn't there when he showed it to him, and he said he doesn't remember saying that. I wasn't there, so I don't know if the gentleman said that or not said that. Larry Bean come back. But for some reason, Larry had some type of a problem with me. He got in an argument with me that I never returned. I didn't say one thing back to him. He was yelling in his office at me, and it's been that way ever since. You know, he's never been able to talk to me easy on something, and a lot of it was some of the paperwork that you showed up there, items 1 through 5 are what it is. They, I gave a copy of all this to the city and to all of the council people, and on the front of this thing here, it has 1 through 5 on it, and the numbers are about this big. And the 1 through 5 goes to all different pages with different numbers, but there's nothing, this is, the other one was 1 through 5, and this is a different document, but then it goes to 3.3, 3 of 3. It doesn't have all of them in here. It's not, he handed me this here whole deal saying it was a complete document. It's not. There's stuff missing, it's numbered wrong. If you look at the size of the lettering, one lettering is one size, the next one's another size. It's, it's not a clear document. It's not, has nothing to do with anything. The grant deeds, it tells you in here that they were supposed to give us compensation for putting it in there, considerable compensation of putting it all, all of the piping through our property. All right, if you look at the easement going through the property, the 20-foot one that comes down off the top of the hill, it's right on the edge of my property. And if you look at the actual property line on my property that comes off the reservoir, it, mine right now goes right up into where your easement is. The easement that you have that comes off for the drain line that comes off the tower, it shows on there that 1 inch equals 20 feet. They messed up on it, too. Your line is way into mine, everything, the electrical stuff, communication box, is on my property that's not in the easement. So there's actually, we looked at it real close, so there's some problems with it, and it's just measurement problems. But the easement doesn't cover where all your material is, where the telephone pole is, not in the easement, it's off the easement. It's on my property, it's not in the easement, it's on my property. When all this was going, like I say, it's been since I, before I bought the house, that everything was decided and told to me that it was going to be city rates, and it's been that way. And I don't see now why we change. If you're looking for dollars to take dollars from people and to do things like that, which he's saying that he wants to go back and collect all of the back dollars, if somebody really cheated you and owed you money, sure, I agree with you. But when somebody makes an agreement, gives you an easement, and lets you go across their property, and then they give you that, there, it shows. But now that I look at your easement, the property, the way it shows it, and I measured it, the easement shows that your fire hydrant in the meter box is actually not in the easement, it's on my property, because it's, the easement's 100 something feet by 40 feet or 60 feet or something like that, and I measured it out, and you're not in it. But who cares? Not going to bother me, it's been there forever. You know, I'm not going to make you dig it up. I got mad the other day and I threatened to do something, but yeah, because I was frustrated. And you know, when we do stuff like this, we're supposed to be a community and work together and do things together. If I was cheating you, sure, come after me. But this was something that I went through when I bought the house, or bought the property, I mean, and built the house. It was all down in black and white. I thought everything was done, been paying that forever. I mean, I don't cheat anybody, never have and never will. You know, my, my deal going through government jobs that I was on proved who I was. I was on every government base you can think of. They didn't give me them clearances that are hiring almost anybody in the United States because I was a cheat. And I don't understand why we're going through this now. You're making it real tough on my wife and I. I just quit my job and stuff, and we're trying to settle in, and this isn't going to do it. We closed down the businesses, and we're trying to get things going and see if we could get our life together, and it's not coming together very easy at all. I think that you should, I hope all of you read all of this stuff and went through these papers, and you see what I'm talking about with these documents and what I was given and what I think happened. But then I understand that Mr. John Lynn had something to do with this. I kind of investigated it a little bit farther and found out that he was involved in it, and him and I had a little blow-in up on his motorsport park, and I got out of it, and this is right when all this come about. I don't know if that has anything to do with it or not, but if it is, it's not too cool when you're a mayor and you attack somebody in the public because you want to get even with them. Not the way we should do business here. You know, we've been coming to this town and being in this town since the '40s. My brother was stationed out here at Camp Cook. So we've been around here a long time. I've been coming here since '62, and I really enjoyed the town. I had a lot of fun here, I met a lot of great people, a lot of ranchers and stuff, and I've had a fun time. If this happens, I'm going to say goodbye to you guys. I'm not going to be called a liar and a cheat in a town I live in. I hope you make the right decision, and I hope you guys do it right. Hope you've looked into it good, and like I say, if you look at most of the documents that were up there, I was going to show you, but it's not going to get anywhere, but if you look at most of the documents that are up there, they've been phonied up. Thank you.
Anything else from the council? Councilmember Mosby?
I've got a question probably for the city attorney. If somebody were to get a 1 times rate, and somebody did this for consideration of an easement, you know, a regular line worker in the field wouldn't be authorized to give something like that. Who could authorize something like that?
Unless the city council has authorized someone else to do it, only the city council could grant that kind of a in perpetuity reduction in rates. And I don't, I don't know of anything in any of the rate policies that the city has that allows anyone to do something like that other than the city council. And there's specific case law that says a city has to have a formal agreement if the city's going to be bound to something that someone is saying the city has to do.
Like through resolution or something, you'd have to do something like that?
Or an agreement, like the settlement agreement that was on the agenda tonight for the settlement of the county claim?
Right, so there's a regular...
A handshake wouldn't work.
Anybody saying that, I mean, now, I'm not saying, I know you guys spent a lot of hours trying to find some documents, and I see that you did come up with another one from 2010, and it's safe to say there isn't another resolution out there around that timeframe, or did anybody review the council, are the council meeting minutes available from that time? Did somebody review those documents? Would have identified something in there, or?
I haven't looked at minutes, no.
Before we conclude this? Okay, there's actually no action requested on this, so we're just going to receive the report, and we're going to take a 10-minute break right now.
Mayor, just to clarify, I was asked in the course of this to return with some additional information, which we'll bring back to the, at the next meeting.
Okay, so we'll return to the additional information at a future date.
I plan to have that, that answer at the next meeting.
Okay, let's take a 10-minute break. Okay. We're going to come back. We're going to go on to new business, item number seven, adoption of ordinance number 1616 parentheses 15. Chief Ladapow.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kurt Ladapow. Served as your fire chief and a few other things. Before you requested action, it's been mandated by the state of California in response to Assembly Bill 2188. I actually had an opinion, an opportunity to offer an opinion and proposed edits on this bill via the League of California Cities when it was introduced, most of which were ignored. In essence, what, in essence, what this bill mandates is a quote streamline process, unquote, to the installation, to the permitting process, the plant check and permitting process for small rooftop residential solar energy systems. And it compels us to adopt an exemption from SEQA. What the bill does is tells us we have to develop a checklist. We have to accept the plans as complete as long as the checklist is attached and signed. And we have to do it either by web, by fax, or by email. We are in the process of putting those programs together. We will be accepting them by email until such time as, hopefully after the first year, we will in fact launch an online plan submittal process, mostly for large projects, not necessarily driven by this ordinance. It is, in my opinion, an unfunded mandate. However, what the state will tell you in the analysis of the bill is the fees can be, or the costs can be recovered by fees. They did, however, put a cap on the fees. Pleased to share with you that our costs of running the operation do not reach the cap. And as is stated in the fiscal impact section, when we come forward with the new fees, particularly for the building department, we will certainly be somewhat cost negative. I already have fees in the fire department. Interesting enough, this bill did not address the requirements of the fire code, and it did exempt the city's process under our electric department. Because you can't, the solar energy folks, the residences, have to have an agreement, have to pay fees to our electric department. Those were not overridden by the bill. I am asking that you consider introducing the bill this evening, I'm sorry, the ordinance this evening, so we can comply with the law by the end of the month. I'm free to answer any unbiased questions you may have.
Chief, just a question and it's sort of a comment, I guess. First of all, we are still issuing permits for rooftop solar.
Yes, and our turnaround's very quick.
Okay. Reason I say that is I've had several people come to me and say, you know, Bob, why did the city stop issuing permits? They've been talking to people at Home Depot, at SolarCity, and SolarCity was actually telling customers that City of Longpoke was no longer issuing permits. So I was over there this past weekend to talk to the person that, he's a salesperson. He was just getting instructions from down below. And actually supposedly corporate at SolarCity was telling them to say that, and I couldn't understand why. So just for the public out there, we are still issuing permits for rooftop solar, and we still have a rebate program going, so.
I can't speak to rebate program. I believe we're capped.
No, no, we still, we still offer it.
Okay. We do have a rebate program.
Yes, we have, still have a rebate program, so.
But we are issuing permits. We actually just issued a couple last week.
Okay, good. The other thing is the report, staff report under fiscal impact, it says there is, it says relatively minor fiscal impact. But there is an impact to the city because as we add more and more rooftop solar, our revenue does decrease somewhat. So there is, there is a fiscal impact with this.
And I cannot address that. I'll let Larry take care of that. The impact has to do with the process of plan checking, issuing the permits, and conducting the inspections. There's a separate fee for what our electric department does relative to these projects.
Okay. And that's fine. You're okay, Larry. Okay. Any other questions or any questions for Chief Ladapow? Okay. Bring it back to the council for a motion. Oh, yeah, let's do a public comment first. Public comment on this. Anyone? Okay. We'll close public comment, bring it back to the council for a motion.
I'll move the ordinance, adopting ordinance, inviting...
Staff recommendations.
Staff recommendations.
There you go. And...
One second.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. That passes 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Okay. We're going to move on to item number eight, adoption of ordinance number 1615 parentheses 15, amending Lompoc municipal code, section 5.60.050. And this is to the attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, the state has a requirement that if a mobile home tenant or mobile homeowner that rents a space in a mobile home park has an agreement that extends past 12 months, then the rent control rules that the city has doesn't apply. And so when a new tenant comes into a mobile home park, the city's code requires, and state law also requires, the tenant to be advised of that fact that if it's more than 12 months, you won't have rent control. We have, we received, my office received a notification from a tenant at a mobile home park indicating that that mobile home park was going to the tenants and advising them that they could get certain services or different kinds of services if they entered into an agreement that was more than 12 months. And if they did that, then that would eliminate the rent control. So based on that and looking at our ordinance, the ordinance that we have requires that tenant to be notified when they're becoming a tenant, but not after they're a tenant and some new agreement is provided to them. So based on that, I suggested that we change the ordinance so that we add some language that says if there's an agreement being proposed either at the time that the tenant is locating into a mobile home park or any time after that, that there's a new agreement being provided, that the tenant has to be notified of this 12-month rule. And so that's what this ordinance does.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Public comment. Public comment on this. Closing public comment, bring it back to the council for discussion and motion.
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation on this.
One second.
We have motion, a second. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 5-0. Thank you. Okay. We're going to now open it up for oral communication. This is your last opportunity to speak to the council for, on any issue you so desire. Seeing no rise, we're going to close oral communication. Bring it back to the council for council requests, comments, and meeting reports. We'll start with Councilor Mosby.
Yeah, over the last several months, I had a couple council requests. One was on sewer rates. If we could discuss those, I don't know if we know when that's coming down the pipe. Of course, if we know approximation of time on chickens, because I went through planning commission and stuff, I don't know if there's an approximation on that. And the...
You've been through planning commission?
Didn't it go through planning commission?
Oh, it did, yeah.
You were there. Chicken eater.
I think we're scheduled for the next meeting on...
That's correct. We're scheduled for the 15th.
What? I didn't see it on my, I missed it on my pink sheet. Oh. Dates above. Very good on that. And then the third item was, I almost forgot what the third item was. That was my third council request.
I don't know, on the sewer rates, what exactly you just...
We were to discuss the, how we come about with minimum, average, and actual rates.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll let you know what that anticipated return on that one is.
And I'll remember my third one here.
Councilor Starbuck.
I have no reports.
Councilor Hamdahl.
Just got a couple. One is that a couple weeks ago, I did miss a meeting, but Bob, the mayor, went for me. Air Pushing Control District had a speaker there talking about El Nino, what the projections are for the El Nino. We've always heard it, been around here, once in a while it changes. This year it's not changing. It's going to be 90% or better chance that El Nino will be here. I've talked to the city, and they're already out cleaning out the gutters and everything else and getting things straightened away. So that's the one of the main things with this. It's an interesting forum that they have and talking about what was coming down and how bad it's going to be in certain areas. It'll start sometime after October 15th. Now, the one real blessing for Santa Barbara County and for Longpoke at this time is we've got three empty dams. And the previous ones that I've lived throughout in this area, we didn't have empty dams. And a couple of them empty because of a lousy work job on a dam. But we have those clean, and the city itself is cleaning the gutters. And it now means the public may want to go there and look at their drain lines on top of the roofs and such to get those cleaned because there will be a lot of water coming. The one in 97, in 96, 98, 97, 98, we had 47 inches at the ranch.